I'm sorry about the mix up.
Yeah, I was like, oh, my God, because it happened to us in zoning where we had a problem with the link. And I thought, oh, my gosh, is that what happened? But I appreciate I was just getting to email you.
Yeah, well, what happened was when we changed the day. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Uh huh, this, uh, see, this agenda was redone supposedly because it is not a regular meeting. It is a special meeting, which means we can't add anything. And then, um, he couldn't get there till seven thirty. So we changed it to Tuesday at seven thirty. And I, I really, I don't know what happened here.
Sorry.
But right. Uh, I don't know if it's seven thirty yet. Yep, it is. So I will call this meeting to order. At seven thirty. And, um, let's see, we have, we have a bunch of people on, welcome, everybody. Let's, uh, so we have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting. Ten people. That were sent out to the selectmen, they're online also.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September seventh.
Second.
Okay, is there any changes or discussion?
I'm good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, then I also sent to the selectman, the tax collectors report. You have six items totaling one thousand four hundred and forty seven dollars and fifty six cents. Tax rebates.
I make a motion to approve the tax rebates, the six tax rebates on, on the agenda.
I will second.
On the, on the tax collector report, that's my motion.
Right, okay.
Kim, Kim, you're, Kim, you're, um, not Kim Tester, but Kim Prokryvka, your speaker is not muted.
Oh, um, Kim, did you want to say something? Because it was the tax collectors report.
I do not, I'm all set.
Okay, so, all right, so that was approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, do we have communications from the public? From anyone? Lumari, no, Julie, okay. Jennifer? So we don't have anything there. Um, okay, commissions and board appointments. We've had two openings on the Council on Aging for a little while, but there is a woman, Ellen Oster, lives on Rocky Mountain Road, who would be interested in taking one of those. They, they have the same expiration date. So, um, if I could have a motion to approve appointing Ellen Oster to the Council on Aging.
So moved.
And I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, zoning alternate. I still don't, Jim, did you want to speak to that or?
Uh, I did have one lady call me. She works in Dudley's office up at Toplands. And I believe she is actually related to Noni. I think she was, I wrote the name down, uh, don't have it here in front of me. But she, yeah, she expressed some interest, but yes, and, um, she's probably going to attend our next meeting just to sit in and see what it's all about. And we can get to meet with her at that time.
All right.
And nothing, nothing for sure.
Okay, and then my next email blast, I will put that we are still looking for a zoning alternate.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so do I have a motion to table that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Jim, it's zoning.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we have probably one abstention, correct?
Yes.
And, um, I would also, I, I take a motion on tabling that second Council on Aging.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Roxbury Museum. I think I sent you a copy of this, I got a letter from Laura Miller, said she would like to resign from the museum commission. And she did return her set of keys today. And thank you, Laura, for, um, serving, I did send her a note. And, um, so it also, so that creates a vacancy that expires actually this November thirtieth. And Barbara Cover has expressed an interest in taking on that position. So if I could get a motion to approve appointing Barbara Cover.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, so thank you, Laura, and thank you, Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I did want to mention that, um, Lanka, I know we have Gene Tierney, but, um, that Lanka O'Connor did pass away in town here on September twenty fourth. And many, many people knew her, she wore many hats, she was an actor, an author, a teacher, a mentor. And, um, she will be missed, she was ninety five years old. And that brings, yeah, she was really great, just really great person. Um, so that brings us to Gene Tierney, who is going to be one hundred on October twenty.
Oh, my God.
Yep, October twenty ninth. So, um, I have a couple of things planned, but I would like to, it's, I'd like to know if you have anything, you know, I can't just let this go by. And we also have, um, our veterans celebration in, um, on Veterans Day in November. And I would like to, you know, especially, um, recognize her because, you know, she's a World War Two veteran. And she followed Patton all over Europe through Germany, she's got a special, um, award from the, from France, the Legion of Honor Award. So she's very special, but she is very private and does not like a lot of fanfare. So I, I would love to have something for her at the senior center.
Just to mention Barbara, her, her son, Brian, died in, uh, the Vietnam War, we have a reserve named after him.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, and his picture.
Veterans Day would be a great day to do it if, if she wants that.
Well, and her husband, Ed Tierney, is also a World War Two vet, who is no longer with us. I know, I, I, I am going to speak to her, I have a, I did speak with her son, Tim. And, um, I'm waiting for a call back because he's, he's saying, you know what, I don't know. I would like to do something at the senior center, a lunch, but we're not, we're not there where we have indoor lunches yet, however. Just, I would like you to just think about. And, um, but I, I will be doing something for her, I just want you.
Do an outdoor thing at the park, run some heaters.
I know, I mean.
It might be a nice day on Veterans Day, it might be a good day to do it.
Well, the Council on Aging has a reception every year in the senior center, so I think that we're planning to do that. But, um, her birthday is on the twenty ninth, so I don't want it to just go by and wait for November eleventh.
Yeah, I get it, okay.
Okay, so I did send you, um, in a packet, new laws effective October one, I mean, there's a thirty six page packet. But, um, you know, there's, there's a smaller, uh, well, I sent you a, a smaller version of just things that we're going to take effect on October one. And obviously, one of them is the marijuana laws. Um, it, some of the towns have a moratorium until some of these regulations become clearer. But, uh, you know, what? Some people have said, well, you know, are we going to have an ordinance that comes out against these or zoning going to take these up? Do you have any ideas or what you would like to see us?
I'd like to speak to that, Barbara, and I've, I've spoke to it before. I feel that the town should have or look into an ordinance as to where marijuana can be used. Obviously, not at town property, not in town buildings, that needs to come from an ordinance from the town. Zoning can look into as to where it's next July of twenty two is when it can start being sold. And zoning, being land use, uh, can look into as where if we're going to allow the sales. And obviously, it would be, in my mind, in the business zone, if anybody wished to pursue it. But I think that's a two step thing, uh, where it can be, um, consumed and used as a town ordinance. And if it's to be sold, that's up to zoning.
I, I mean, people who use it currently for medical reasons and they're eighteen years of age or older can start growing it. Um, so many plants in their home, et cetera, and there, that, that is already in effect.
We're talking about selling it and is it a zoning thing? Or I noticed a lot of towns are banning the sale in the town through the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I think that, I think that's a subject that, you know, should go to, uh, go to the town and, um, and see how they feel about it. It could be a town information meeting that would then, you know, we could decide where to go, I, I think that I.
Just send out one of those things you did for the dog park and see where people fall.
I could do that.
Yeah, do you want pot marijuana sold in town?
Um, you know, creative. To one, one location, one location sales for twenty five thousand people.
Right, we couldn't have anything, um, more than that.
And it has to be, I think it has to be a minority person who owns it.
Now, see, they don't, they haven't come through with all the state regulations, that's a problem. I mean, this is rolling out kind of slowly. And, um, the, the state's still working out details regarding the regulations and licensing. So, so in the meantime, before they came out and said, this is what it is, many towns jumped on. That thing until we find out more information.
I think we should do that, but I have a problem with sending it out to the people to see what they think. I mean, personally, my kids are older now, but, um, I'm, I'm upset by this because it's, it's not going in the right direction. And it's all about money, 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 money. Um, so I agree with Jim, I hope zoning bans, uh, you know, pot use at parks, you know, at the tractor parade.
No, no, wrong, Russ.
People. No, that wouldn't, it wouldn't be zoning, that would be the ordinance.
It's an ordinance, it's got to ban the use on town property.
But, you know, I don't want people smoking pot on, at the tractor parade, you know what I mean?
That's totally up to the town ordinance to pass that.
Right. Well, so, do you want us to propose an ordinance and with that, and then put it to the survey?
Yes.
Okay.
Town property should, it should not be used on town, it's for private use and not on town property, town buildings.
And, and, and I think there should be a more moratorium of selling pot in Roxbury and, and, until the regulations are finalized.
Right, we can't sell it.
I think we should do both.
Can't sell it in Roxbury to July first of twenty twenty two.
It's a twenty twenty two or twenty three, I can't remember now.
I think it's twenty, I think it's next July that sales could start.
Uh, recreational users, okay, um, oh, uh, recreational users cannot grow it until July twenty three. I'm, there's, there are, there's so many parts to it that we, we just really need to pay attention to it, but we can, we can, I can get, uh, you know, a draft ordinance and, um,
Yeah, you saw the towns, a, a lot of them have done it, so.
Okay, all right.
Shouldn't be hard, we just replace their name with ours.
Yep. We'll see, Torrington's a little bit different, some of them that have done it are, are, are a lot larger than we are. And, and it's also, um, something that has to do with the number of people in your community, you know, if your population's higher than fifty thousand, you have to designate areas, but where they can smoke, so.
Well, we don't have to worry about that.
No. Okay, so the next thing, out of state, uh, vehicle registration, brought it up last, um, month. And, um, so I, I said I was going to check in to see what Waterbury is doing. And what they did is, um, they, he said, he called it a, a civil ordinance, they instituted that after ninety days, if you do not, um, change your license registration over to the city of Waterbury, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. He said the, um, there's a statute that also allows to give a state ticket for two hundred and fifty thousand, but it didn't, up to hundred and fifty dollars. But it really didn't work because if there's money that the town would keep. So, um, let's see.
Well, I don't know how you enforce it, I mean, Waterbury is different than us in that they don't have a lot of weekenders living here who have now become part of our community during the weeks since the COVID, since COVID. I don't know how you enforce it. Do we write down, uh, license plate numbers? Because the, you know, at, at the transfer station, when they come in with a New York, New Jersey, Vermont license plate, we write them down and we check them out? Is that how you enforce it? Because they're supposed to live here six months out of the year, like most people, uh, claim Florida as their state because of tax. But they got to prove they're down there more than six months a year.
And, and they do that by credit cards, you know, but do we have that ability to start track of people's credit cards?
No, and you know what, uh, one of the companies, they, they did, they did hire, they collect data. And if it comes out that they have, um, seen somebody over the ninety day period, the money automatically comes out of their checking account. And I, I don't know how you can get away with that, but, um, but it does exist. And I think that it's more if you are keeping track, if the police keep track of the, um, New York plates or out of state plates, I should say.
Yeah.
Um, and they, and they come across that plate after ninety days, then they can, um, approach them. And, uh, he said, you got to get the information out that if you don't pay, you have to, uh, there's a threat of a fine. And so it's like we've seen this car in Roxbury for more than ninety days, and we are going to fine you.
So that's one way, right? But how many of those are there, we don't really know, do we?
He said a lot of it is common knowledge. And, um, I said, well, you know, there are people in this community that live in, that do have a home in New York and their license plate is New York. But, um, so he said, you know, if you wanted to, if you, you could stop them, but you have to have, you have to be able to stop them for something, you can't stop them for their license plate. And he said, really, it's about keeping track of, unless you want to hire a company, which I think would give me bad blood myself, but.
Yeah, I, I'm not in agreement with this, I don't think it's that big a problem in our little town.
Well, I mean, we can ask our police to keep, you know, they can go through the parking lots and, and see the license plates and they can wait in ninety days to see how many times they see it. And then, you know what, they can get a call and say, look, you know what, it's time for you to do this, or.
And maybe send out an email blast saying this, this is something being looked into. So if you are living here more than, less than, more than six months a year, you, you really need to register your car here or you could face penalties. Right, just warn people.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and if you're, you're here more than six months a year, then to, to be part of the community and pay up.
Our mill rate is a lot lower than, uh, New York, I would think.
So I can't under, well, I don't know how.
But, I mean, you know, everybody's got their own story.
States work, you know, a lot of states don't tax cars at all.
Yeah.
So that's the difference.
I think like Louisiana.
Kind of unique to that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, so.
My grandfather said, if we don't watch out, he used to say, if we don't watch out, they're going to start taxing the air we breathe. It's true.
Um, well, I, you know what, I could just send a standalone email blast and say that we are considering an ordinance. Um, that after ninety days, um, I did speak with some, I, I actually have spoken to two people just recently. One has just moved here, they said, um, and I said, you do know, when you move here, you have to change your registration to Roxbury or plates, et cetera. And they said, yep, we're, we're, we're doing that. And then another person was telling me, I said, you know, you're, you're relatively new here, do you know this law? And they said, we've been trying online and, um, it, it's, it's, uh, it didn't seem to be as easy as they thought it was. I'm not sure what the problems were, I said, well, if you need help with it, you can, you know, we could find somebody to help you get through the, the minutia. So it is about, you know, um, it's common knowledge or knowledge about new people moving in and, and just letting them know, hey, you're supposed to be doing this.
Yeah.
However, some people move in and they still own a home in New York. What we charge, we had two charges, one, if someone asked to hire police for a private party, the resident. And two, if we had a company like Eversource asking for our police for whatever, um, you know, to babysit down wires or, or a, a project. So we have charged, um, the homeowners, oh, boy, here, wait a minute, let me just grab this real quick. We have charged homeowners fifty five dollars an hour, where the police got the forty dollars. Or et cetera. And so I am proposing to raise it from fifty five to sixty five an hour because if they are on special duty, um, they have gotten raises, they are paid, you know, thirty dollars an hour, and it would be time and a half normally. So they don't get time and a half with, uh, paying them a forty dollar rate. So it would be forty eight dollars if it was time and a half. So we could pay them fifty and charge the homeowner sixty five. If it's a business, we currently charge eighty dollars an hour. And I'm just proposing that it goes to eighty five because the police were getting forty five dollars an hour, we could add the five dollars on and we would get fifty dollars. But for, for them to come in, um, and work a special duty, whatever, personal party or.
It's their choice though, right, Barbara, we, we don't force them to do it, it's their choice whether they want to work it or not.
Correct, but if you have something that, like, that we feel, you know, we've been asked for weddings and, uh, you know, to have, it's a private party, a wedding or something, and can we have police, we've been called. If we say no, we don't have anything because they don't, they won't work. Um, I think I'd rather have the police work and most people are willing to pay to have that.
What do you mean they won't work? What, what do you mean, because they won't work is not worth it?
No, no. Oh, I mean, it would, it, it, you know, if they wanted to stay home and rape leaves, this would be more of an enticement to come in.
Police.
Well, they haven't done that, I'm not saying that they have done that. I am just saying that time and a half is not there if we want to do this.
I don't know, Jim, what do you think, I'm kind of on the line on that. I, well, I see people raising prices all over the place and in, in the end, taxpayers are paying it anyway, I mean, Eversource is going to raise their rates and, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I really aren't. I, it'd be helpful, it'd be helpful to know what other towns are charging, that would make me feel more comfortable, you know?
That's what, that's what I was going to, uh, bring up, um, because I've recently got back involved with Chapag Ice Hockey Booster Club. And the Booster Club's in charge of all the finances. And I just touched base with Washington Town Police. And every home game at the gunery, we have to have a Washington Town Police Officer at the rink. We pay, we pay, the Booster Club pays Washington Town Police ninety five dollars an hour. And it's the minimum, minimum of three hours, whether the game takes two or whatever. Um, we, I sat down with them and it's a minimum of three hours and it's ninety five dollars an hour this year.
All right, I make a motion.
But I mean, if they want to, if, if, if we don't have, if there is a situation or a big event and we don't have our own private police and they need to go and hire the state police, it's like a hundred and seventy five an hour.
All right, you sold me.
And now.
I, I'll make a motion to raise the pri, police private duty rate from fifty five to sixty five for a resident. And what was it, Barbara, for commercial, seventy five?
No.
Eighty, eighty dollars to eighty five dollars, that's my motion.
Okay, with the police getting fifty an hour, that's, that's.
With the police getting fifty an hour and the town getting the rest.
Correct.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Okay.
And I will, I, I'll second that, I totally agree.
All right. Anything, uh, any other discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
All, I.
Aye.
Now, we have currently three constables or we have, we got three.
We have three, we have.
Joe just works weekends. Correct?
Correct.
So he wouldn't, if, if it was a Friday night function, we're down to two that we can offer this to.
Uh, no, we would have three on Friday night, he's Saturday.
So what three, I thought we only had three.
We do have three.
And Joe's just, it's weekends.
Correct, but you know what, he, he might come in for a Friday night event, absolutely, yep. And, um, the, our other is, you know, he's involved with, um, the military also and working out some things there that may be able to give us more hours. But he has already worked, um, you know, special duty, already works.
Okay, all right.
All right. So. All right, where am I, Senior Center Director, okay. We did speak about this. Uh, we have, this is coming up after the budget season because the Senior Center Director has decided to retire and is looking to retire by November one. So, um, we advertised this and we actually spoke with, um, the Senior Center Director. And she reports to a Board of Directors. Um, I spoke to you and about increasing this to full time. And, um, it, I know, Russ, you, you had some concerns about that.
Well, I'd like to vet it better and I'd like to give the next first selectman the opportunity, it's his, it's going to be his budget. Who, no, no matter who it is and vet it better, I had a lot of questions. I'm not opposed to it, Barbara, but when you want to take a position and make it a full time position, I, I have questions and I, I owe it to the taxpayers of this town to make sure that we're doing things and we have all the answers before we make a, a change like this. And my questions would be, how many people use the senior center, especially during COVID? I mean, really, nobody's been going there for a while because of COVID. I don't understand the rust to this, I think the next first selectman should be the one to choose the position. But you may be in a position where you don't have a choice, I understand that, I get that. I'm totally behind you, I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong. I, I don't know, I, I think it was a couple of months ago that, um, the director let us know that she was going to retire. And a couple of months have gone by. I know that in other positions, when positions came up, it came to the Board of Selectmen and we would actually interview people. When people want raises, we interview them, there's, there was more vetting going on within the past. So my, I'm not opposed to this. I know that people, some people on the board of the senior board, uh, are for this. I, you know, if I have. I, you know, if I have to show myself that I really looked into this, I, I, I'd like some data on it. I mean, you don't just make somebody half-time to full-time without providing information as to what's the reason? If, if the reason is, well, we're an aging population, so down the road, we're going to need a full-time director. Right now during COVID, you can't say that. And you got a new first selectman coming in who should have the opportunity to, to make that decision, in my opinion. Now, you may not have the time and I, I know you put it out publicly. Good. I'm glad it got, it got, um, it was in the paper. I think you have, what, seven candidates?
Yep.
Yep. You know, have, have you interviewed them?
We're starting, actually I have one tomorrow and the rest on Thursday. And what I wanted to do was have made a, a special meeting afterwards and we can talk about the salary. And I think that, first of all, yes, our population is absolutely aging. Two, while there was not a whole lot going on during COVID, it still was, um, had some activities. We have a very active senior population and things are starting to come back on, uh, uh-oh, we just lost everybody.
No, we're all here.
Oh, you're, you're there? Good. You can hear me? I can't see anything right now. Um, I forgot what I was saying. The, very, very active senior population.
To that Barbara, our population hasn't changed in ten years. A lot of people moved in, a lot of people moved out.
Vocal about that. And I think that, and like, and this director herself said, it would be a lot better if it was not asking that for herself. She's suggesting that the next person that comes in has that. I think the Senior Center could be a lot more active than it is and maybe have, you know, more trips. Some of the groups want to meet again and they want to meet in the town hall. People have been vaccinated. There's been a lot of precautions, et cetera. And I think, I, what I wanted to do was be able to go through the interview process. Jim Conway said he would do that with me and I was, Bill Curran can't make most of them.
Well, I would have too if I had known.
I know that you're up to your eyeballs.
One tomorrow, one Thursday and I'm.
Work, but, um, on Thursday, if you would like to join us between one and four, that's when we're going to be interviewing. And then we could meet and, and talk about salary based on experience, et cetera.
It would have been nice to have a heads up to the interview so I could.
I mean.
That's what you're gonna do. I know, I've been here with you twenty-four years.
The director, the current director, that we would get someone in there and she would like to spend a little bit of time and someone's going to have to give notice.
I know.
Most of these people are working.
Barbara, can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh boy. Can't hear me?
No, we can't hear you.
We can hear you.
You can't hear Ross.
You can't hear us.
Screaming.
Hey Julie, what am I supposed to hit here to get back on?
Let me see what you look like. It says you have a microphone and a camera. Um, okay, let's try this. Um, go to. Let me text her.
Yeah, she can't hear anything. Russ, you, can you hear me?
I can hear you Jim.
Okay, I just, I just found out today myself about the interviews.
I can't remember what I'm supposed to hit.
Yeah, Jim, the problem is, you know, as you know, I have a job that's out of town. So I, I need a heads up. I can't just.
Yeah, no.
Yes.
You know, I, I.
Can you tell me how I get back on here? I can't.
Yeah, Judy called me today.
Okay, I mean, go ahead, go ahead with it, I say. Go ahead with it. I just thought it should be vet it better than it was.
Yeah, it's gonna be. We're gonna slow it down a bit.
You're gonna see the speaker, so it's like three different icons. One with an X, one with like a low sound, and one with a high sound.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We could always hear you Barbara.
We can hear you.
Okay.
You can't hear me.
Now I can hear them. Okay, thank you.
Which is why I was ranting.
Okay.
Barbara, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, currently, currently it's a part-time position. How many hours was our current director putting in per week?
Here, wait just a second. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six and what is full-time? Thirty?
Thirty-five.
So we're gaining nine hours a week?
Yep.
Basically.
And at what cost, including your benefits?
Is there benefits included?
Yes.
Attention, healthcare, everything.
Yes.
We have to provide healthcare?
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's for the employee only. We've had a policy that a while back, um, on new hires. Oh my gosh. Would be employee only. And that's why I was.
That's what I wanted. I wanted to know what's the cost? What's the difference? Where's the, where's the justification? You know, if you're saying all these people want it, okay. I think the taxpayers of the town would, would want, that's why they vote for us, would want us to vet it properly. Make sure we're not just making a full-time position because a couple of people want it. I don't know what the, how many people go there every day. I know in the last year and a half, that's hard because, but before that, I just think coming out of COVID, even if we're coming out of it, this is not the time to do this. That's, that's my opinion. I am not opposed to listening to it, but I don't have the data to make the right decision.
Okay, so what exactly are you, well, I mean, I have these interviews scheduled.
Well, go ahead and interview, but what's the cost? And where's the justification? I mean, what, what, this extra nine hours a week? What, what programs will be added on? What will that person be doing an extra nine hours?
That's why we're hiring them, so that they can come up and, you know, launch this. That's why I'm not it. You know, launch this into having more and more programs. People want exercise classes, art classes, more food, ideas, et cetera. We've had things, Marianne De Silva has also stepped back. Somebody's gonna have to, you know, make sure that the senior lunches, a, a lot of things revolve around food, obviously. Other programs, I mean, these are things that, you know, you can have people come in from different doctors' offices or whatever. That's what they're for.
We, we should have asked the current director to give us what the plan may look like. I mean, we're just throwing it out there. I, I don't know, I'm in business Barbie. I can't, I, my brain doesn't function that way. I, I've been trained that way and I'm sorry, I'm not opposed to it again. I, I just have questions that I, there's no data.
These are things that came from the current director.
To make a good, to make a good decision. And that's, that's why people elect us as a board, because they don't pay attention to this stuff. They trust us to vet things out properly, do things and not change.
I, well, I feel like I have, so I will go through with this interview process and I will call a special meeting with you and Jim. And we will, based on experience, what they can offer about moving forward.
Okay, let's, let's do the interviews, yeah.
Yeah, fair enough. Wish I could have been there, but okay.
All right. I think that I can absolutely justify it. And I think that someone probably would have been on board for October one. And it just went, it didn't go by the wayside, but it just didn't happen where it got advertised in time.
Where did we post this Barbara? Voices, Waterbury?
It was in the Waterbury paper.
Waterbury.
And it was on our website. So we have, we have, actually, we have a couple of people from Roxbury and then the surrounding towns. It wouldn't be someone too far away.
Did we post it as full-time? We did post it's full-time.
So we posted it as full-time before the Board of Selectmen even discussed that and, and agreed to that?
No, uh, what, what happened is, is that we did, did have a discussion, but it was not at, uh, did not make it into our minutes.
I don't remember agreeing to a full-time position without it being properly vetted. But I've said it ten times, I'm good, let's move on. I don't think it was done right. It doesn't mean that when we hire somebody, uh, when we interview somebody, we could always go back and say, look, we've had a discussion. We vetted this properly and we're going to stick with a part-time position until COVID gets better under, understood and a new first selectman comes in who's going to be responsible for this budget.
Well, no matter what it is, i- if it's over a, a certain amount, it's gonna have to be going to the Board of Finance to let them know that we're going to increase this line in the.
No, I get that.
All right.
All right.
Solar. Solar project. Okay, so, um, I had asked this Santa Energy if they were going to, if they wanted to join us tonight, if they had anything else to report. They have been through all of our buildings. They are trying to get some information from the school as far as electric bills, et cetera. And, um, they've been all over and I think I sent, let's see, they, what they were, what we gave them permission to do was a walkthrough and they called it their fatal flaw walkthrough. If there was something that would absolutely turn them off and say, this is not worth it. And he said on October the fourth, he sent me something and he said, I wanted to just follow up and thank you for showing us around. And so far, we have not found any fatal flaws with the locations that we reviewed. And they were Booth Free Senior Center, Minor Memorial Library, the Town Hall, the Fire Station, Parks and Rec Building, and the landfill. So it said, there's a few things that we need from you now. And it was some more bills from Booth Free School and a copy of the deeds for the landfill site, which I got today from Jimmy. And, um, which I will pass along to them. But Jimmy made an observation that the land, the, the, the properties that the town owns up there at the transfer station are actually three parcels. And that the last one was a parcel that Frank Gavel donated to the town and that was during my tenure, which abuts it. But the other two that we paid over several, over several years were each for Eleanor, Eleanor Hurlbut and Ethel Hurlbut. And so there is a line that divides those two pieces of property. And he said, while you're doing all of this, it might be nice to just go to planning and make this one big piece of property for the town. We can certainly do that. The next person can certainly do that. And, um, next month, the solar company will come back to us. I will, like I said, I will get them the deeds and we'll see what their report is. But what do you think about doing that? Erasing the lines between all of these pieces of property and making it one?
Totally agree. Yeah, totally agree, yes.
Okay. All right. The Housing Authority. There's not, really been no movement on a Housing Authority. But the.
You created one, right? I mean, we have one now?
No.
We have, we're.
No, we have people that are interested in being on a Housing Authority. But as I've said, the Housing Authority is not something that's government-run. And it needs to, uh, you know, get a, be a startup of people that are interested in this. And it is different from the, the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee. Those are two different things.
Right.
So some of the people that are on the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee, which I'll report on next, are also interested in a Housing Authority. But someone needs to take that and run with it. And right now, people are just looking at it. But I think that that is what would be, what would bring this Affordable Housing Plan that we have been mandated to do by the state, something that's a reality if the Housing Authority also existed. I know that the Housing Authority in Washington has been very successful. And they do, they purchase land and they have, you know, housing. I don't know if all of it is affordable, but it is supposed to be. And so.
Nothing's affordable anymore.
Well.
What's affordable?
Anyway.
It's a good idea. I, I thought it was off the ground. I'm sad to hear that. But we'll get it going. We'll get it going. You know?
Well, it's been, it's been out there. The selectmen have brought it up several times. Several years ago, the, um, several years ago, after the Smart Growth Meeting, people came forward and said they would be interested in this Housing Authority. And it was like, well then, you know what? If you need some help, we can find some help. The Conservation Commission brought people in to talk about what other towns did to form a Housing Authority, but it just never went anywhere. And like I said, it's not government-run, so it has to be an outside group.
We can't do it for them, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Right, okay. All right, we'll see where it goes.
But there are people on this committee and maybe, um, you know, as, which is the, which is the next item on the agenda, Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee met last night and that's why we changed our meeting, actually. And, um, this, that the state has mandated an Affordable Housing Plan. They also offered a grant that you had to apply for, which I did, to pay for someone that would facilitate it. And if we went with our COG, which is Jocelyn, I didn't have to do an RFP to go and find someone to do that. And I brought that up and that was brought up at a selectman's meeting. And, um, we agreed that we would go with Jocelyn. I signed that contract and I gave her the names that I knew that were interested. And I can also put that out again in our next email blast to see if there are any other people that are interested in serving. But it was actually a, a good group last night. And, um, you know, learned some things she was going to send around her presentation that she had. I, I didn't receive it today. But, um, we do have to have this plan, but there are no specific requirements in the plan. It's basically, you know, what, what our town would like. And so, um, in our email blast, I'm going to mention that this Affordable Housing Plan Committee has gotten together, if anyone's interested in joining it, when the next meeting is. And we will tell, um, the residents that we, we will be looking for their input on it. And, you know, every town can be different.
You're looking for more people to join it or is it done?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I got a couple of friends who are very interested.
Basically, she said last night that all of us that were in attendance, that we, you know, suggested that we go and, and try to talk to some other people to join in.
Oh, okay, great.
Bring some ideas, bring some, you know, direction, what they think, what they want. This committee doesn't, uh, it can be large or small, larger, I think.
Isn't she part of that? I think we should find that out, cause, I mean, I've been on their website. I'm learning stuff.
You know what? Quite honestly, it is what this town is gonna want. I mean, we talked about it last night.
I know.
Our zoning, our zoning has been very proactive, um, you know, as far as we have had Affordable housing regulations and zoning for many, many years. You know what? It, it has to be a win-win for a builder to come in. And be able to take advantage of those and, and also the land, you have to get through wetlands, et cetera. But the other thing is, is that, you know, we do have the accessory apartments. Basically, and now they have just upped that to two. Accessory, what do you call them? Apartments on, on, on a lot if they meet all of the requirements.
You mean our zoning? Our zoning did that, right? Yeah, that's, that's the good stuff. That's.
So that, and, and I mean, they've talked about lower lot, smaller lots near the center of town. I mean, they're, so. We are talking about it. We don't have our heads in the sand. We do have 18 units that are affordable at the, I mean. That fall under affordable housing. I mean, maybe our plan is going to look to expand that. Up there or another, you know, senior housing complex and maybe it'll focus on rentals. I don't know where it's going to end up. But it is going to involve the public.
Yeah, but my question was. Was, is Jocelyn part of Desegregate Connecticut? This is why. It's putting a fox in the hen house. If that's true, and I don't know it's true. Heard a rumor and I definitely want to research that. Because Desegregate Connecticut is about doing away with zoning, about doing away with towns. Having their own rights and how they, how they deal with affordable housing. I mean, you go on their website, now they're starting to call environmental justice. They're out of. In my opinion, they're out of control, but and Toll Brothers and other big builders. Are the ones contributing all the money to them. So I'm scared of them. I really am. And I'm scared because we have a legislature that's a monarchy. It's not a democracy. Whatever they want to get through, they will get through. Governor Lamont is the one who told them, no, not going to agree with this. Because you're going to do it with carrots and not sticks. So thank God for him or they, they would have gotten a lot more than. Just getting us to do a housing plan. I'm not opposed to doing a housing plan. I'm not opposed to having this discussion at all. What I am opposed to is having people. From who know nothing about our, our town, our history, who we are, our economy. And coming in and shoving it down our throats. That's what I'm opposed to. And that's what. Desegregate Connecticut, which by its name alone is racist, to, to say that all us, all. Coming to move here, which is totally false. Our town has no say in who buys a house. No, no say whatsoever. So I just want to make sure that if she is active with that, at least she comes out. Ethically, she should come out and say whether she's active with that group or not. I think that's.
I can ask her.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if she's not, great.
Okay. Anything else on that?
I'm good.
Oh, so. It, our next meeting is. It's going to be the, I think it's, what, what did we say? The third Wednesday of the month at seven o'clock. It'll be by Zoom. The next, however, the next one is going to be the October 28th. And then after that, it's going to be. November the 18th.
Okay, that's on the website, right?
That was just decided last night, so no, it's not. And I was going to ask Julie to set up, Julie, to set up that October 28th meeting. Because it's the town's Zoom. So, but I will get that information out also. Okay. The dog park. Okay, so Jason, who is our student. At Chapagin is, came to us about a dog park for his senior project. We did do, we did send out the survey. There was, I believe, 280 responses, which is pretty amazing, I think. Overwhelmingly in favor. Jimmy did a great job with the survey and gave all of that information, compiled it and even into pie charts, et cetera. And sent it back to him. This is Jason's project. So he has to. He has to bring it to the town. He's got, he's got to go through the commissions. He's got to go through wetlands and I asked him. The other day, where are you with this? Do you have any update? And what do you think your next steps will be? And he said, I'm setting up a meeting with Mr. Cody for this week. And then after that, my next step will be to plan how to raise money to buy the fence. Yep.
Just due to location of the dog park within our park.
Yep.
I would like if. Russ and yourself, the three of us could meet over there Saturday, Sunday, just for an hour. And take a look at where we think, where we think, the three of us, where we think it should go. And actually walk it. The corner that's been suggested currently is so wet, they couldn't even cut the grass this week. The lawnmower got stuck two weeks ago. This week he couldn't even go down there and mow it.
Great idea, Jim. Great idea.
We need to, the three of us need to take a look and say, this is where we feel it should go because it's our call.
Right. And if we need to put a curtain drain in or something, because there's no options, then we could do that.
That corner down there has got drainage going through it. There's one pipe that comes out across from Ralph Barton's. And drains into the side of the road and another pipe comes right down through that corner. It's, they're not quite doing the job. Of course, we've had so much rain.
Yeah.
But I just noticed yesterday that the corner was to the point where Jeremy couldn't mow it this week.
Yeah, nothing worse than a muddy dog. I know.
That does happen and it did come up in one of our discussions about how it slopes down also.
Oh, it's downhill.
Jason had talked about filling it in. I was like, but he, he's got to go through all the steps and.
Yeah, I, I would like the three of us to take a look and see where we think, the three of us, where we think it should go.
Let me know, I'm on my way to the dump.
There you go. Saturday works. I can do anything you guys want.
Saturday works for me. Name your time in the morning.
I'd have to be.
Is this Saturday, the 9th?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd have to be, I'd have to be 10 or after.
11 works good for me.
11's perfect for me. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, let's do that.
Great, great idea, Jim.
I'll have to do another agenda. Okay.
Can I ask a question about the dog park?
Sure.
I was wondering, you're planning on putting this at the Apple Lane Park?
Yeah.
Yes, and, and believe me, we've thought about. The parking, et cetera, for the Pickin' and Fiddlin'. It's all been taken into consideration. But you know what? If you want to come out there with us, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, Todd.
I, I would like to because nobody's talked to the fire department about it or anything that I know of, but. We can't, I mean, I think a dog park is a great idea. Don't get me wrong. But we really can't afford to lose much real estate over there as far as being able to put pickin' and fill in there because we're right at the minimum right now.
Yeah, understood, Todd, but we're at the beginning stages of this. That's why nobody's really reached out.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, that's.
No, but there was, we did, we did survey the town. I think it went out twice or three times in the email blast. And I did write about it in, in the email blast, but also we did, you know, originally it was going to be. By the basketball court. We said, no, no, no. And mostly our thought has been about picking and fiddling more than anything. Or if someone wants to rent it and they're having a wedding, we didn't want it anywhere near that. And then it was going to be like at the end of the parking, when you first go into the left and I said, we can't because that's extended parking. So we, we are, we're, we're, we're looking where and it looks like it might be down. On the other side of the, the walkway in that corner. But that, that corner needs work. It needs to, and most cars don't park there.
Let's go look at it. I mean, it's hard to, I can't vision it right now.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Todd, 11 o'clock Saturday.
Sounds like I'll see you there.
Bring your dog.
The one thing with that survey.
Yep.
And I had a couple of other people bring it to my attention. You could get on there and vote as many times as you want. It wasn't really a true survey.
I don't know. I think, I think there was a way that Jimmy. Could tell, could tell.
You're talking about the tech guy now.
No, I'm just, it was brought to my attention by a few others and I was like, oh boy, here we go.
Well, I, I'll tell you, Todd, the people I talked to at, at the tractor parade. Overwhelmingly surprising to me, really want this dog park.
I understand that I think.
I mean, I, I go to, I go to New Milford's because there's more people and more dogs to play with. But I, I, I did get four or five people telling me that that was a great idea.
Personally, I think it would be great at Sherman Park. There's been nothing done down there in years, but.
Well, we did look at that.
My first choice.
Well, we did.
That place has been kind of pushed over, over the years.
Well, let's talk about it Saturday. Yeah.
We, that, as a board of selectmen, we did talk about that. He went down there. The student went down there and looked at it. It was then brought back and discussed again about there's no facilities there. For people and anyway, you know what?
Well, it's an option.
It's his project.
Because there's no facilities in New Milford either. I mean, you pick up your dog poop if you got to go. Go to the gas station on the, up the street is basically what it is. But what, you know, we need to meet and look at it and I'm glad Todd joined. To remind us that picking and fill, fiddle and I haven't been there in years.
There's, there was no reminding because we did talk about it and moved it specifically because of that. And, and we'll look. All right. The ARP money plan. I, I think you've got some information that. I sent that they have now extended when you need this plan. And. Which is a good thing. However, we're really going to try and. Well, I would like to see something settled on as far as what we want to spend this money on. And Kim Barron asked if I would join her on a Zoom meeting today with the Connecticut Community Foundation. And asking them if, if they could come up with an application for. The nonprofits. That they could apply for this money. And also because of the record keeping, I said, you know, some of these are, we're looking at maybe $5,000. But the record keeping is on the onus of the town if the, if who we give it to does not come through with it. And they would step in and be able to administer all of that paperwork for the, basically for the nonprofits. And so we asked for a proposal. They said they would absolutely like to help. They'd like to get involved with other towns. Told them that we decided that we were not going to go for the small businesses. And because really we don't have a lot of money and we do have some culverts that we do need to address. And so that was just today. They're going to come back. I thought maybe we could talk a little bit more about it tonight. But I think we should wait to see what their proposal is because obviously they're going to want to get paid, I would think. And, and see what, what that comes out to. So if, if we have a special meeting again for the Senior Center Director, I can also put that on the agenda. To bring us up to snuff and obviously the Board of Finance has been involved. But maybe we could present them with, here, this is, this is something final. And Todd, while you're on here. I just want to make sure that there's an understanding because Sarah does join these meetings. That, that the, the addition on the firehouse is not at a point where. We have actual dollars of what that would cost. I mean, we had talked about that in the very beginning and I know I put a call into you about other things for the fire department. And we are looking at lost revenue for the fire department because of a lack of not having the Pickin' and Fiddlin'. And so. What we decided to do is spend the money. Some of this money on replacing some culverts that really need to be repaired. And then, you know, try and help with whenever this capital campaign will go out, et cetera. Some of the other questions were. And I know Kim and Sarah were going to make calls again to the Labor Department about what exactly. Had to be done as far as prevailing wage and Davis Bacon, so. Are we on the same page? I just want to make sure that we are on the same page. As far as not putting some of this money towards that addition now. Or am I surprising you?
No, we've talked about it before and none of this money would work well for what we want to do.
Right, but you, but we are looking at helping the fire department with loss of revenue. And I think that that's probably the easiest thing to do. And if you were going to put it towards that, maybe that's the way to get around some of that.
Yeah, that's what the finance board talked to me about. Before with the loss of Pickin' and Fiddle and they were.
Right.
Willing to reimburse us with that, which was greatly appreciated.
Okay, so. I'm here, I'm just, I, I think we need to wait. To see what the Connecticut Community Foundation comes back with. They said they would only take a couple of days. You know, to have something that everybody had to apply for. Because we did have some, and this is for the nonprofits. I don't know if I made that clear. This would be for the nonprofits. And then the rest of the money could be divvied up for the, the culverts, et cetera. So when I have the Senior Center Director. Special meeting for us, would you like me to add this or would you just like to wait to go to a Board of Finance meeting?
Why would, so you're saying that both any nonprofit, including the fire and ambulance would. Have to now apply for this even though the selectmen and the Board of Finance are all on the same page?
Yep, that's what Kim said, that she needs to have some money, she needs to have some kind of an application to follow this. And. And she wanted help with it and that's why she asked for the Connecticut Community Foundation to meet with us.
I think if you're. Going to put an application out there, it's not fair to now make it like. A backdoor thing. If you're going to have an application, then you need it to open it up. I, I don't know. I.
No, I think that if the, certain things are decided on, those people have to submit this. Just so that there's, there's a file that started and the paperwork goes along with it. And we have, we have, we have chosen several nonprofits that we thought. Needed help, that benefited the town and. That's the way the finance director wants to go with it also. It's not, what, what do you mean backdoor? Because.
Like you're calling it an application after you've already, after you've already picked the people?
And those people would just have to put the.
But aren't there going to be other people who are then upset that they weren't considered if there's a cool application or something? I just think you're opening yourself up to some bad blood by calling it that or something. I don't know. Just my opinion.
Well, I mean, if this was awarded to the people that, the, the nonprofits that were decided. Without an application, it probably would do the same thing then, correct?
Well, yeah, but then why do we need an applicant? I, who, who, can you explain why we need an application?
Yep. Because the finance director would prefer to have a, an application come in to start a paper trail. But it's not, it's not going out to, that anyone else could apply. It's going to be for the people that are chose, the, the nonprofits that are chosen. Those are the people that would get this application and fill it out and give it back. And you know what? I, I'm, I'm.
I guess, I'm waiting to. Why are we going to have the, why are we going to pay the Connecticut Community Foundation? When we have a full-time finance director and she has an assistant like can't. When we have a full-time finance director and she has an assistant, like can't we figure out a one-page application? I, I don't know. Just. And I don't like the idea of calling it an application because I feel like it's, um. It's, it's like a behind, it's like an after the fact thing.
Well, it doesn't end with the application and then handing over the money. There is also a justification that has to come through. And this is what she would like. And like I said, I asked them for a proposal. What, what are they going to do? And, and you're right. It is, there are a limited number and, um. This is not something that we have decided that this is the way we're going. This is what she would like to see and we are looking into it. And I will, as soon as I get the proposal from them, um, we could talk about it more, but it's not just. Here, put the, fill out this piece of paper and here's a check. It doesn't end there. It's, it. Because of the money coming from, um, the federal government. There's always paperwork that follows, always.
I get that, but I don't know why we need to involve them. Like, so Kim.
She asked, she asked.
Nonprofits. She needs information from the nonprofits as to what our tax returns are, you know, showing the loss or whatever it is. Like that shouldn't be. That, I, I just, that's my opinion. I'll be quiet now.
No, she asked, um, to look into that and, uh, and would I sit in on the Zoom meeting that, and I said. Yes. And that's where we are and asked for a proposal and there's nothing set in stone for anything. It just. Gonna listen to see where, where that, where it is. But it was at her recommendation. Yes. Okay. Um, transfer station.
I would like to, when we get this information, Barbara, instead of, uh. Part of our special meeting for the, uh, senior center director, I'd rather just go right to the board of finance meeting with this because that's where it's going to end up anyway.
Okay. And they do meet, um. They meet on the 19th. So we'll have that for them.
Just go right there. You and I, Russ can be there and yeah.
Yep. Okay. I'll do that. Um, Teresa. Okay. So, uh, last month we voted. I think it was last month or month before that we voted as of October 1, we were going to start charging for tires because of the steep increase to us. To get rid of them. And it was $3 and, uh, I believe. Three and then it was, um. $3 for a tire. It was 10 if it had a rim and it was 10 if it was. Like a, a tractor tire, whatever. But the operator has asked that we just make it an e- even $5. Because nobody has changed. They're not going to write a check for $3. And if we could just change that regular tire to $5.
I make a motion to change a tire charge for car tires to $5 and. Keep truck tires or tires with rims at $10.
Okay. Jim, we got a second?
Coming back.
I don't want the dog out.
Yeah, the phone.
Russ made a motion to, um. Um, to increase. The charge that we, I think it might've been two months ago, that effective October 1, we would charge $5, um, to charge $5 versus $3 for the car tires.
Right.
And in asking other towns, I mean, when I first brought it, it was between three and six, whatever. So five really is an okay.
All right.
Number. So I need a second that we will change that to $5.
How about the truck tires?
That will stay at 10.
Okay. And we, we put a 18-inch size limitation, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
And if a car tire has a rim on it, it's 10.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Did we find out if we can even accept tires with rims? We haven't been able to up till now because they wouldn't put them in the container with rims.
Right.
I say take them because you'll find them on the side of the road.
Yeah. Uh, no, I'm, I'm good with the five and the 10. That's, I'm second that.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, bridges. Oh, boy. Um.
Oh, boy.
I. Have. A couple of things here. All right. First with Davenport. Uh, just wanted to bring you up to date on that, that, you know, we did award this to NJR. And I was hoping that we could get this started in this construction season. Unfortunately, everything is. Behind as far as getting, um, the culvert, the actual culvert. So now we've missed. Um. The construction season and they have ordered, they've been given the go-ahead to start whenever. So it'll probably be, I don't know. April depends, you know, if the spring's a rainy season or not, but we are on board to do that. But the other thing is, is that had gotten a grant through the local bridge program for over 300,000. And when, um, all of. Everything started escalating, we put in some more information. And now it's, um, over 500 that they have awarded our supplemental application that was accepted and the grant amount has been adjusted. So. Um, and, and the final bid was over seven. So. Um, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
The, uh, so. But during the storm, we know that we've had some problems with, um, Painter Hill Road Culvert. Over the brook here that is right off of 317. And so, uh, we had hired. Cardinal just to go out and look at it, give me some estimates. Should it have a box culvert? Should we have an arch, et cetera? And, um. They said you could go either way, you know, one is going to, the, the precast concrete box is going to. Give us a 50-year design flow and the other one, um. So will the, 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 uh, what do you call it? Corrugated metal pipe CMP arch. It would be 50s. However, the difference in the cost. Is what, uh, is the problem. So. But what is there now are two different pipes, two different sizes. Obviously we're put in. At different times over the years. Uh, they've been there longer, a long time and the whole thing is just falling. It already fell in and the water came over in the last storm. So we had two that were a problem. That one and. Or to fix this bridge, I mean, this culvert over on, uh, Painter Hill. But the cost came in. I said, you know what? We're going to have to go with that arch, uh, because I think that we would get it sooner. And, um, the cost is also cheaper. And if we, it, because it's going to trying to get it done in a hurry. Um, just the arch, the, I mean, the concrete box was going to be $589,000. Not just to buy the box, to replace it with that concrete box culvert. $589,000. I said, I, I'm stunned. Then with the, um, the arch. The corrugated metal pipe arch, um, it was 421,000. So I was talking with, uh, Public Works and we, you know, that is a full-blown design. To have the, um, concrete. The head walls and everything on this. And it was, you know what? If we got the right piece of equipment. Because I don't know that our backhoe will work. So we rent a, an excavator. Or maybe the backhoe will work, but if we, if we go with this, um, arch, this kind of this corrugated metal pipe arch. And we extend it a lot longer on both sides. We don't really need that big head wall and that is, that costs a lot of money. Um, and I'm talking to, uh, Butch today about the cost of that. Um, he couldn't get a price on the concrete because, um. They have no idea when they're even going to get that in.
Right.
Um. Oh my gosh, I can't believe it. I'm really, I'm really, uh, I wrote it down and now I. I was going to say, I think it's $13,000 for that pipe. And if we had our public works do it, it's a, it'd be a long way from 421,000. This is going to be all totally out of pocket if we want to hurry. Get fixed, quick fix and apply for the local bridge money. But that, it takes forever. I mean, that's why we don't have Davenport done because waiting and waiting and waiting for them.
Right. And, uh.
Anything and you, you can't do anything until they award it. Otherwise they won't pay for it. So.
If these guys say they can do it, I'd say. Let's go with them.
Well, that was my initial recommendation to do. Squire. Well, at least Painter Hill because that's ready to go. That's.
Sure.
That's scary.
That is ready to go.
Let them do it.
Separate it. They could do it. You put the same size pipe.
No, this is going to be bigger. It's going to be bigger and it's going to be, you know. Wider. I mean, if, you know what?
Go smaller and, and you don't need an engineer to tell you that. And then I'm all for it. I'm all for it.
Well, if we don't have the head walls.
But do we put up guardrails? You gotta put up.
Yep.
You gotta put up something, but right, head walls are expensive.
All right. So that, so then I will move forward with. Working with the guys to get that done. Um. Then the other one is.
Make sure you get a rail lamp permit, please.
Yes. Well, so I spoke with John Cody today and I, uh, explained three bridges. So that's one, three culvert. That's one. The second one is Squire. And, um, we might be able to do the, the same thing, um, with this. Uh. But, um. Not, I don't know about not having, we could absolutely put a guardrail there versus having the, um, cement.
Yeah, make sure it's wood like you did on, um. River Road.
Somebody else is going to be doing this one, but, um, I'm just trying to get, get them started. You know, the, the concrete, the precast concrete box. It's, that will have the 100-year design flow. And, um, but it's, and it's saving, saying the design service life will be 75 years. And the estimated construction is $811,000. I said, you know what? I just. I just, I just can't believe it. So then there is a smaller precast, uh, concrete box. And it'll pass the 50-year design flow. That water has never come up over that bridge. So. You could probably go with something that size, but the total design that they want to do is like 685,000. But you can, it has twin pipes in there right now and they are saying that. You could put two twin, um. The metal pipes. In again, because those are, you said you looked at this, Russ. And aren't they deteriorated? Time to, I mean, if we're going to put any work in there, we got to replace the pipes.
Oh yeah, it's, it's a year out before they start corroding it totally. I, I, I'm all in favor for a box culvert and not have that. Uh, two pipes because that's what creates problems. Sticks and trees get stuck on that. If you have a free-flowing box culvert in there, that doesn't happen. It just goes right through.
Well, we can certainly, um, put an order in and then. Uh, it's not going to happen because they're so backordered.
Right. You're.
But we can certainly start that. And I think that that's another one. That we can have the guys do, or you have local guys here that could, could do this and just, you know.
Well, I, you know, when Frank from FSM and I went out to these two. Squire and Davenport, that, not Davenport, uh. Painter Hill. That's what I recommended was, don't wait for grants. These things are in bad shape.
Right.
Put out a bid. And then we talked about, well, we kind of need an engineer. To put out the bid, which costs more money and that makes it more expensive. I thought that you have local guys look at it and give proposals for what they would do and how much that would cost. These guys sometimes know more than the engineers do, believe me.
Well, I do have some reports here that we did pay for. We didn't pay a lot of money for and that we would go. You, you know, use this information, especially for the, the box and the. The pipe, et cetera, and make sure that we're at least.
Great idea. Great idea. Let's.
With me. Okay. So I, I'll try and move on those. Um.
You in agreement, Jim?
Totally, totally in agreement.
And then the next one's going to be, um. Foxford Hill. I mean, that one, the walls are coming down when Jim and I looked at it.
I know. Uh. That's another one. It's got, it's got the walls. However, on that one, and yet the water comes over the pipes. I think we need to go for the local bridge money for that one.
On that one, absolutely. The pipes are in good shape. It's.
Pipes are in good shape.
Yeah, they are. Um.
Or we, we go and say, okay, then, uh.
We need to go soon.
All right. What, what? Excuse me?
We need to go soon on that then. For local bridge. I thought we were in Barb. Did we, were we in?
I applied. I didn't, but they awarded us two others. They, and, um.
So we have to apply again?
Yep. But we also have the HVA working on that.
Yeah.
And, um. Yes. A lot of stuff going on. Okay.
Well, this is going to cost us $800,000. So.
No, 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 no. No. So for, but first, I've got. A whole sidewall. Just caved in on Wakely. And that pipe looks okay right now, but that is right on the road. It's on a turn. And I've got to hire somebody and this is what I talked to John Cody about, that I need to send him an email and say, look, these are three things that I need to get repaired. And, um, he said that it sounded like it was maintenance. And I said that we need to know exactly what you want for wetlands, but I would like to get started on it and want to, and, um. On Wakely, it's right on the road. The road's going to start. You know, deteriorating. And like I said, it's on a, it's on a curve there. Um, but it all fell into the river.
Yeah. Well, I mean, unfortunately for John, he's not authorized to approve maintenance like that.
Okay. So tell me what you would like me to do.
He, he can't make that call. That's under the regulations. You need to come before the wetland commission and if they're just telling us what you want to do and we're going to want certain controls. And.
Obviously.
You could do that. Um, if you, if it's an emergency, we will have a special meeting for it.
Okay.
Maintenance is when you want to fix something that's, that's needs to be repaired usually on a residential property. This, this is a made, this is more the maintenance. This is fixing something that's totally screwed.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
So the right way to do it is to have the commission weigh in with it, with our request for erosion control. Just to make sure it's done right and we'll have a special meeting if need be, just let, um, John know and we'll get that set up. But it won't be next week.
It won't?
No, I'm off next week. I'm not going to go to meetings on my days off.
No, no, no. So I thought you're, you're the following week.
No, next week I'm off.
Okay. Well, I won't be around in November. So, okay. Uh, the next thing is. Wellers Bridge. Heard about Wellers Bridge the last time and that it was rated poor. And I asked, you know, why? We did have Cardinal Engineering look at it. I said, and they did do a report. Uh, they went out and like verified what the state said is wrong with it, et cetera. And I said. Okay, there's federal dollars for this bridge because of its length. And, um, we need to get this into the federal local bridge program.
Right.
In the meantime, I think I explained that the state. Said they are now taking on a new role with engineering, et cetera. And, um, that we could go through them. And so I said, okay, but we already started the ball rolling and, uh, Cardinal actually helped me with this, um. Application to the federal. Local bridge program. And what was awesome, I just couldn't even believe it. Um, on October 1st, I got a letter. And so the prelim, the preliminary costs for this bridge that Cardinal came up with. And they came up with a total replacement, which is what the state. Want, actually liked because they agreed. And it's still unbelievable to me because we put so much, uh, work and. Money into this bridge, but you know what? 20 years goes by in a, in a hurry. And what we did was we replaced the whole upper decking. And, um, unfortunately the rebar and some of the other things that were in good shape at that time are not in good shape now. And they said, um, also because the, the state said that we had to address the scour critical problem on the. Um, the middle pier, um, what do you call it? On the um, the middle pier, um, what do you call it, not a pier. What's the word?
Yeah, it's in the middle, the middle beam, yeah.
That we were trying to save because it, the, the water was undermining it. And now we have a huge island growing there and now it's undermining the side ones. Now, this is, the bridge isn't gonna fall down in the next. Um, you know, three years, maybe four years, whatever, it's, it's not at that point, but we do need to start addressing it. So I said, well, we're gonna get, get on the ball here and um, I. Um, contacted the DOT, said, yes, we wanna work with you and I am sending in an application to get into the federal bridge program. Under the preliminary application, the preliminary cost came out at four point two million for a total bridge replacement. And um. I mean, really, the estimated construction is like two point nine, but when you add all the other things to it that they wanna see, it's four point two. I just got a letter, I think I sent it to you today, October one, that they, they accepted our application and they awarded us three point three eight six million.
Oh, wonderful.
It is wonderful, so. The uh, I I won't be here, but somebody will at least have some money in the checking account to get that going and so. They have to be working with the, the state DOT and um. It's, they are, the state has committed to fund eighty percent of the eligible product. Uh, project, I'm sorry, and um, it's going to, so anyway. In order to say, yes, we wanna accept this and yes, we understand that if the costs go, you're still going to commit to eighty percent. I have to get this letter in to them within thirty days, I have to sign this. So I'm looking, um, so in this letter, it says the next step in the grant process, if this commitment to fund is acceptable to the town. They need, I need to sign this and return it within thirty days, so that was October one, has to be in by November one. And then, uh, as soon as you get it in, a department representative will contact your office to schedule. The concept meeting to review all of the rest of the requirements. And then they said, we want, we recommend that you set up a separate budget line item for these projects and make the auditor aware of the projects. I would like to do this and because. This is not um, something that was in our budget listed as replacing Wellers Bridge. Really have to go to a town meeting and um, if I'm going to a town meeting, I would like to also, after talking with the board of finance. Take the senior center director if we so in fact approve that.
So this first.
I need to, I need the okay to sign this.
I may, I make them, well, go ahead, Jim.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're, we're back to going with Cardinal Engineering, correct?
No, no, they helped me with the application, but now the state is going to take over.
So this is the group that we met with, uh, I met with, okay. And it's a eighty twenty deal, stuff like that, yeah, okay.
And it, but it says if you're um, the commitment to fund is gonna lapse, number one, if you don't get this letter in. And if your final cost estimate exceeds your preliminary application and the monies are not available. Meaning monies are not available with the state, so um, we're saying it's gonna be four point two. They're giving us three point three and they're saying, but if you come back and say, oh my gosh, or they come back and say, cause we're working with them now. It's gonna be five point five, but we're only still giving you three point three, you gotta understand that. And hey, you know what, the bridge is gonna have to get fixed, so. Gotcha, but we got three point um, three point three eight six million, which is awesome.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is that alright?
Sure.
How long is that money good for? I mean, how long, is there a timeframe when it has to be used by?
Um.
No, it has to be, yeah, it has to be used for the project.
It has to be used for the project, but the um, you know, when I was speaking with the state, they're, they're saying. They don't see that this thing is gonna take place for like five years and that's why they're saying if the costs are gonna escalate. We, and we may not have the eighty percent to add to it. You, you need to understand that now, but um, I will absolutely call this gentleman tomorrow. And say, you're not telling me how long this is, you're saying I gotta sign it within thirty days, but um. You know what? Anytime, any of the um, local bridge money. There's, there's really not a timeframe, but they expect that you're going to work on it because you're asking for it, because you have issues with some bridge.
Alright, so what are you looking for a motion for?
I'm looking for a motion for you to allow me to sign this um. Commitment to fund with the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation.
So moved.
Three eight six, six four zero. For Wellers Bridge Road over the Shipog River, bridge number zero four nine eight one.
So moved.
And I will, I will second.
Alright, any more discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we got a lot of stuff going on and I mean, things just fell apart and you know what, it's not cause we don't, haven't taken care of these, I mean, we. We had a big, big bridge project, we closed Wellers Bridge for a while. Um, back in, what's the date you said, Jim, was on there, two thousand one? Yeah.
Yes, two thousand one.
Yeah, I, I've got that stamped on there to make sure that we heard it. Um, I'm okay, alright, where am I? So we did all of that, alright, the Shipog, you have anything, Russ, the Shipog River?
No, but we should pay the bill, we've been talking about this for six months and we haven't paid the bill. We're a party to the lawsuit, we have an obligation, we haven't paid the bill, Barbara. Every, every meeting you keep saying you're gonna go back to see if we approved it, blah, blah, blah. And we're, we're just stringing it along and it's not fair to them. We're part of the lawsuit, we have an obligation to pay the bill to monitor Waterbury. The money, as I said, I looked into it, the money's legit and we should pay the bill.
Okay. Yes, and you know what, I don't know why it hasn't been paid, we will, I will make sure that this check gets cut tomorrow. But there was a second one that came in that we had talked about and you told us to hold up on that.
And it, it was all for, um, it was all for reviewing Waterbury's plans, it's all part of the lawsuit. Going forward, I've, I've committed to be the one to contact for Waterbury, I'm gonna look at this stuff. And no charge to anybody, cause anybody could look at it. And from going forward, I've committed to the Roxbury Land Trust and the Town of Roxbury. That you will not be billed for anything going forward unless you agree to it ahead of time. And, and you know that the bill's coming. Uh, it wasn't right what was going on, they were just hiring consultants to do valid work, but they weren't telling us how much. And when the bill would be here and you can't run government like that and I told them that. And from here on in, now that I'm in charge and I will be in charge, even if, even if I lose the election. I will continue to be in charge with the city of Waterbury to make sure that the Shipog River. Agreement is adhered to, cause it hasn't been in the past and it will be going forward.
So we're paying two bills.
Two bills.
Alright, I absolutely held up the second one.
Yep.
But, alright. Okay. Again, I don't know where we're getting it, but uh, cause it wasn't budgeted, but I, I'll find.
It's not your fault, Barbara, it's not the town's fault, nobody told us this, bills just came out of the blue.
Yep.
Um, and as you know, I looked into it and it's valid, but it wasn't managed right and it will be managed right going forward.
Yeah, they can't hire people and send us bills without us knowing nothing about it.
That's right, I, I totally agree, but I don't wanna stick them with it, cause it's valid work.
Yep. Alright, the fire marshals report I don't have for September, but I do, I did pass along the resident trooper, uh, his summary. And um, had two hundred and sixty seven calls for service. And it included investigations, motor vehicle stops, patrol checks, burglar alarm responses, medical assists, et cetera. There were five accidents investigated, one fatal, unfortunately, one untimely and uh. That's it. That's about it, um. Uh, uh, so it's, he said in um, resident trooper says he's in contact with Ring. To set up a police account for their neighbors app. And the app will act like a neighborhood watch program and also allow me to send out alerts, advisory type communications. A Facebook page might be rolled out after a social media training, which was delayed due to scheduling. And we are um, also working uh, still, um, and I gave it all to him today. I gave him a company that I was dealing with on the body worn cameras, so.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Night.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Uh, good night, you're welcome.
See you, Kim.